Three core beliefs which define us as a school system enables to accomplish his mission are continuous improvement of students, teachers, staff and administrators, enthusiasm in teaching and learning, collaboration in teaching and learning. Role of the school committee is threefold: one to write policy, two to approve operating budget, and three to hire the superintendent and support here in carrying out her initiatives for the district. Public comment. Anybody for a public comment? Okay. We have something very special next.
Alright, so we have done the presentation of the certificate of academic excellence to Lawrence Tang. Congratulations Lawrence.
Congratulations. Outstanding job.
Congratulations. Now, well, just beginning. We get to, you know, we get to brag a little bit about Lawrence. So, to tell you a little bit about Lawrence, he is a National Merit Commended student. He has scored a perfect math SAT score and a nearly perfect ELA score. He is part of the USA Computing Olympiad at the gold level where he competes against teams from around the world. He has attended three prestigious and selective summer academic sessions. In the summer of 2017, he went to Brown University and he was studying nanotechnology, excuse me. In the summer of 2018, he attended Harvard University and he studied web programming and abstract algebra. And in the summer of 2019, he went to Stanford University and studied the foundation of machine learning. He has placed in the Falmouth Public Schools Science Fair every year and attended the state level science fair in his junior year. And he's been playing piano since the age of five and he is in our honors level chamber ensemble. And this is Lawrence Tang. Very good. And at this time, we would like to invite everyone into the hallway for a reception in the honor of Lawrence.[201.12]
Cutting ceremony, hopefully shooting for like November. And we're going to do a school-wide engineering project that's linked to literature with a story called If I Built A School, which is a great story. And hopefully this will entice everybody to really get excited about being innovative and working in that space. We're also going to be conducting staff meetings where the teachers will make a roadmap of all the activities that they already are doing that could possibly be done in this space or could be done in their classrooms with materials from that space. Because that's the object is that you don't have to go to the Makerspace to do your invention or creation. The materials can come to you, so everything is very mobile. And so we're going to be making a roadmap for what we are currently doing and then we'll build off of that to new and novel things. And we also have to build a way to have the room usage tracked, so we're going to be doing that. And finally, we're also going to solicit some input from the new math coach to see if she can assist us in developing some STEAM projects that would work well in the Makerspace. So we're really, really excited about that. And then finally, the third goal is that we will continue to attend to the whole child, including social, emotional needs and the academic needs, and creating a very student-centered focus that supports students through increasingly personalized instruction and individual learning needs. There are many things that we are already doing in lines with this goal that we as a school don't want to let go. And they all come from the three words effort, excellence, and excitement. And so what we did is we brainstormed those three words together as a staff and thought of all the things that we do that fall in lines with effort and excitement. And we went to the PTO, went to the school council, just to get other people's feelings about what it means for those three words for East Falmouth School. And when I looked at those words and I shared it with the school council, the school council said, you know, you need to attach that to your plan. And I don't know if you have it with your plan for East Falmouth School, but I brought extra copies for you so that you can see the different activities that our school fills are pretty personalized to East Falmouth in supporting this school. We're going to work with some other things too, though. We're going to identify stakeholders and get their opinions regarding homework and analyze that. We are going to reach out further to getting more volunteers to the school through high school, through VIPS office. And we are going to look at all the ways that we have opportunity for students and make sure that we're reaching the students that we may not be reaching. There she is, Mary Lou Patello. Since I'm at school council, I just wanted to introduce that you are going to be walking in this store. Mary Lou, I know was a teacher at East Falmouth School for 35 years, so I'm very lucky to have her on the school council. And let's see, what else? We have a special program that's kind of an informal program. It's called Under The Wing, and it's for adults at the building to work with the school adjustment counselor on students or with students that may need an extra adult in their life. And they just are paired up and that person just reaches out to that student and make sure that they touch base with them and just keep a special eye on them and try to build a friendship. And we're expanding that Under The Wing program this year to build partnerships with families. So maybe new incoming kindergarten families with fourth grade families. So that's another action step with that goal. And we are going to make sure that we continue to focus on the chronically absent students and communicate with the families. Not so much with, it's more in a proactive sense, so that we're saying, you know, your child, it's the first month of school, they didn't miss any school yet, and really celebrate that with the child and with the families. So that's one additional way that we're meeting students' needs. So do you have the paper with the three Es? Perfect, it's in there as well. Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. Any questions? Thank, oh, yes.
Can I ask you a quick one?
Yes.
Under your action steps for goal number three, you have the physical plant analysis and gender sensitivity. Could you explain a little bit about that?
Yes, so I wanted to go through the building to see if we are identifying children as boys and girls and how often we see that label used in the building. And we had a discussion with the staff about that. And until it's kind of brought to your attention, you don't really realize where it is because sometimes, you know, people say, no, we don't really have that. We don't use boys and girls. We use students, we use friends, we use children. But then when you go out there with a fine tooth, you know, and really say, let's see where it is. So we are finding some places that we're using those terms.
Thank you, Dr. Dale. Next, we have Nancy Ashworth, principal of Mullen Hall.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. And I wish to acknowledge Rose Moran, Assistant Principal of Mullen Hall School. So when you hear me say "we" or "I," I really mean Rose and everyone at Mullen Hall. Perhaps you know that we're shifting to a three-year cycle with our school's success plans. So I hope that you find our school's success goals to be timely and perhaps timeless. So the first goal talks about reviewing what teachers are teaching and what students are learning. And our action steps relative to this goal are our collaboration with the new math instructional coaches, our active participation in Dr. Dora's homework review action plan, working with staff and with professional development relative to Journeys writing. And also we'll be partnering with the literacy manager as well. And we also have included the initiative relative to Makerspace. And so for year one, we look to update the physical plant and stock the space with recyclables. And both of those action steps have been met. Right now, we're supporting professional development for conferences and making sure our instructors can really increase their skills in order to facilitate this growth mindset learning space.
Could I interrupt?
No, I already did. I know people are listening and maybe they don't know this concept, Makerspace. I know Justine mentioned it, I don't know the other. Maybe if you could just, for the general public and some of us, what is the Makerspace?
Sure, so with a range of materials and with a flexible room design, students could be perhaps programming a robot, they might be building, there might be a challenge, build a castle with materials you have in front of you. And maybe three groups would be doing that. So we're supporting collaborative learning, curiosity, creativity, and in a way that allows students to really develop the skills of working with one another. So it can look very technologically driven, or it could be using some cardboard material and some other incidentals to challenge themselves to be as creative as possible.
And is this room set up different than a classroom, a Makerspace?
For me, you really want it to be flexible, so some tables might move, they might kind of lean up so that you can have more of an open floor plan. You might have round tables for children to sit in a circle. We have a few stand-up desks with computers on them if students need to reference, and a lot of storage bins for work in progress. So I would say adaptability in the learning space.
Thank you.
Goal number two, we will maintain a committed focus on acquiring resources necessary to provide all students access to learning in a manner that meets their needs. The action steps included here, if you have them in front of you, I've also included the action steps and labeled them either tier one, tier two, or tier three.
So I think we had a copying malfunction because we don't have them. So if you can spell it out for us more. Yeah, but we only have goal one. Something happened on the copying. You can tell because we have the second.
This is my favorite one.
I'm sorry, so spell it word for word.
All right, so we're focusing on resources to help students learn in a manner that meets their needs. And kind of a subtitle is student support and programming. And our action steps have a label either tier one, tier two, or tier three. Tier one benefits all students, much like Comer Choice. Tier two would maybe reach 15% of the population, maybe a little more targeted. And tier three would address maybe 5% of the population, so very targeted and personalized. So as I go through them, I'll give you the tier as well.
Awesome.
We really understand the impact and the acceleration of the adverse childhood experiences our students are facing, and we need to respond to how this may limit some of our students. So we have established a social, emotional learning committee to expand best practices, tier one. And a majority of our educators at Mullen Hall have adopted a social and emotional learning goal to their professional practice, to their educator goal. We will enhance our PBIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention Systems, and our common language to support the learning climate for all students, tier one. We continue the exercise group and topic-specific counseling groups, tier two, tier three. We will continue best practices learned relative to supporting accelerated learners and their instructional planning, tier one, tier two. We will honor recess as part of the curriculum, tier one. We will use restorative practices and the language when we work with students to respond to conflict, upsets, mistakes, or challenges, tier one, tier two. We will support families with circumstances that result in challenges, such as food program, flexible conferencing, family resource meetings, multidisciplinary and multi-agency joint meetings, holiday support, scholarships, tier two and tier three. We will partner with McLean Hospital and keep consulting with them relative to students' needs, tier two and tier three. We will begin an internal review and audit of our gender neutrality practices as it relates to signage, to inform practices and procedures that promote equity and access and opportunities for all, tier one. We will ensure common planning time for all educators at the grade level and also teaming time for special education teachers to meet with gen ed teachers one-on-one so they can really discuss deeper at the student level, tier one. We schedule Friday front-office meetings, which serve as a forum for reviewing and monitoring and planning for students and families and the school, tier two and tier three. We will continue the enhancement of the garden programming and access for all students, tier one. And we support and welcome the CONNECT program as it transitions to Mullen Hall School, including connections and communication with students, staff, and families, tier one. Finally, we will maintain and enhance our partnerships as it actively promotes the achievement for students in the areas of physical, emotional, mental health, and safety. We will maintain our partnership with Woods Hole. We are excited about the Cape Kids Meal, and we will help VIPS bring this programming to fruition along with Dr. Dora's office. Internships, we welcome the support of Falmouth High students, Falmouth Academy students, Upper Cape Regional Tech students. We have a counseling intern and a psychologist intern. We're working with Gosnell to support students. And our school council outreach at this time, we've targeted a goal to initiate a full Mullen Hall thank you campaign to all of our community partners. And we want to focus on garden enhancement and perhaps think about how we can involve the community with summer access and usage, perhaps through some community plots. And safety, maintain and enhance our relationships with all of our community partners and make sure we are current and implementing the appropriate security measures. Questions or feedback?
Sounds great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you for listening and thank you all for your collaborative spirits. It's truly appreciated. Thank you.
And now, Tim Adams from North Falmouth Elementary.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, so echoing something that Nancy said, now that we're in a three-year cycle for goals, at least one of the goals I proposed for this school's success plan, I think, really lends itself to developing over time and expanding of it. They all really could, but I'm excited by the prospect of having a wider timeframe to work on certain ones, so that'll be reflected there. Our first goal, our first goal is going to focus this year on homework. This is a topic that was discussed at our first school council meeting with great enthusiasm. I know it'd be something that we work on at the district level as well. Really, the vision here is to get consistency with what our homework policy is, and in this year, sort of our year one would be a study. What are best practices for homework at the elementary level? What does it feel like on the parent level? And that's something I already got from our first school council meeting. How does it feel at home when we assign things from school? And how does it play out at the dinner table? And, you know, really, what do we want to accomplish with homeworks? This year will be a year of learning, I think, before we come up with any kind of a policy statement aimed at homework. But there'll be a lot to learn, certainly. It was a very enthusiastic topic for that first meeting, beyond all others. When I brought up the idea of looking at homework this year, they could have gone for three hours talking about this. It's really, really interesting. And then, great to get the parent perspective too, who have students in upper grade levels and from other districts, that topic's something that's very passionate for families, and I think it really lends itself to being explored this year. I'm excited to do that work. And really looking at how it can be beneficial and engaging for all of our students and can lend itself to student growth is kind of the lens I'd really like to look at. So that'll be a big part of discussion this year at common planning time meetings, at staff meetings. One thing that came up at a staff meeting too, that'll sort of be a side area going, in my mind, goes a little bit with homework, but it fits here as well, was looking at recess practices as well. How do we, you know, utilize recess as part of our curriculum, really, I think, as Nancy said as well. And it does have its place amongst all the other subjects, an equal place, so looking at recess as well. Goal two, this year we'll focus on writing instruction. We just had a professional development day on Friday, partly aimed at looking at the Journeys program and the writing component that it has. So our goal this year and going forward will be seeing how we can take those tools from the Journeys program and incorporate it into our existing best practice. And doing a quick look-through of our most recent MCAS data and last year's, it's certainly an area that we could grow in, that part of that exam, you see kids who have to create a response, whether it's a short response or a lengthier response. And it's always an area, it's an area we could grow on, where, you know, how can we gain in that domain? And also, I think, broadening what writing instruction can be in the 21st century and sort of reframed it as student expression, looking at how we can create, I think, a unified and transferable skill set for all forms of expression that students can use in school and then going forward into life, whether it's spoken expression written or even into digital media and other forms of communicating, that really create a skill set that can be used in all of those areas going forward. Again, so a lot of our professional development time, we've already identified on Friday for grade three and four, one component of Journeys that looks promising that we could use, some of the writing prompts that the program includes as formative assessments that the grade level could use altogether and then take those results back as a group and analyze how the students are performing on a prompt they've never seen before. See, are they really utilizing the instruction that we've given? Do they really understand the skill? Can they demonstrate it for us? So we've already found that component would be promising going forward. And our third goal this year, this goal is really, I think, the one where I thought about a three-year window, you know, can we look at something that's larger, was the one I had in mind, and really looking at student growth and rigor. And again, looking at our most recent assessment data, that's an area I think we could grow on, was growth, that we'd like to keep driving at that. And really, and again, growth for all, creating access and opportunity for all students, no matter where their skill level is presently, there's a way to grow from that. So some areas that will be incorporated under this will be, something you've already, Terry, you've been talking about, will be the Makerspace. We also have a Makerspace beginning at North Falmouth. And that's the kind of place where new instruction can happen that can really drive student growth in a way that traditional instruction can't. And this is where you look at higher-level thinking, the constructivist approach to learning, where students are creating, not necessarily just learning new knowledge, but they're actually going to demonstrate and explore, which ties right into student growth. So that's a new area that we're really excited to get started. Two teachers approached me already with lesson ideas, so we're ready to kick off and see where it takes us. That's going to be a really exciting part of this goal going forward. Kind of taking baby steps this year, but it's going to be headed to, I think, a major component of our instruction, and not just in that one room, but also how it will transform instruction in the classrooms themselves too. I don't view it as an isolated part of the school that gets used as a special, but really it's going to permeate our instruction across the board going forward. But we're just starting this year, so more to grow there. Those are our major areas for the student success plan. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And our fourth elementary school, certainly not our least. Sandy, Capes and Bellis for T-Ticket.
Might be some repetition here. So the T-Ticket, we also have two goals. Some of the information is similar. Our first goal aligns with both the Teaching and Learning Foundation for Excellence Strategic Effectives. And it focuses on that the teachers will have opportunities to focus on the curriculum, providing students with rigorous instruction while implementing a responsive assessment system. The goal also focuses on sustaining a professional culture grounded in high expectations and accountability. So as you know, this year, we do have the additional support of the math coaches, the elementary literacy manager, and we're going to have a lot of professional development around effective lessons that support the district initiatives and the best teaching practices. So our action steps, to begin with, we're going to be focusing on the MCAS data. So the district has provided a new tool, which is really exciting. Sonya has shared that, and I've done some professional development around that, supporting our third and fourth grade teachers as they navigate this new tool, which will allow them to have much easier access to individual student data. Last year, I talked about our pineapple chart. We're going to continue that this year, which allows teachers to invite their colleagues into their classroom to view best teaching practices. We're going to be supporting the superintendent, engaging students and families in discussions that are focused on homework. We will be working with the math coaches as they help support the teachers in developing some new tools, a shared toolkit that teachers will be able to use as a resource and a curriculum map. So that's pretty exciting for other teachers to be able to share that information. With the literacy manager, we'll be working with the reading teachers and supporting the district literacy action plan. We'll have our school-based literacy team as well, focusing on those action steps. I'm going to be continuing to work with teachers during the student support time blocks to discuss the progress monitoring that's going on with students who may be struggling, the types of interventions, and the next steps that we'll be taking. In the area of professional development, we'll really be focusing on that tier one instruction and providing teachers with the focus of the essential elements that should be in place, and these will also be a focus on our walkthroughs, myself and the assistant principal, when we're going into classrooms, making sure that those things are all in place in the tier one. And then we're obviously going to continue with our growth mindset discussions and activities that we had started last year with both the students and staff. Our second goal is going to be focused on fostering the collaborative relationships in our school and the community to enhance student programs so that all students are able to access the curriculum. We're going to be working with our school adjustment counselors to highlight building relationships at our monthly staff meetings and our school-wide community meetings. The classroom teachers are also working on building the community within their classrooms, helping develop that social, emotional capacity. And when you'll see on the, when we go to the MCAS data, one of the areas that we continue to struggle with are the students who are chronically absent. And so thinking about building that community, we really want to focus on providing the support to the families and to the students, making sure that they recognize that they are part of that community at school, and when they're out, they're missed. And continue to support the families too, and making sure that they can get the children to school. With the instructional leadership team this year, we will begin our research around restorative justice and best practices. The next part of one of my action steps is called morning movement. So this year, we've started something new at the start of school. Previously, the students, when they get off the buses, would line up in the front office and then go down to their classrooms. And last year, prior to the MCAS test, third and fourth graders had an opportunity to go outside, once they got to school, quickly go to the track and walk or run, and then come back in, and they took their tests. And third and fourth grade teachers were pretty happy with the students' output on those days and had kind of pushed that forward to see if maybe the rest of the school was interested in that. So we've taken that on. There's a lot of kinks that we're working out along the way, but we do have all of the students exiting the buses in the morning, and they all have opportunity to go to the track, walk or run. And obviously, we all know that that exercise is great to get their bodies to learn, but what I've heard so often too is the social opportunities. So the kids are so excited that they can walk or run with a sibling or kids from other classrooms, so it seems to be positive all around. So we're excited and we're going to keep working on all the details that surround that activity. We're going to continue to engage in our partnerships with the Woods Hole community, the Cape Kids Meals, we're very excited about that as well. We have the internships in Gosnell and Comer Choice, the Companion Animal Program, and the Service Center. And we also recognize the importance of providing students and families with social functions, so we're going to try to continue to increase those fun opportunities for the students and families to be able to engage in. And our final goal is going to focus on the physical plant. We would like to ensure effective operations and equitable resource allocations for all students. So we're working with our school-based safety committee to identify some measures to increase safety and security. So we have some additional cameras around the school this year for the door entries, the key fob, and then we're making sure that our practices within the school align with our Alice training. We too have purchased some new furniture for a few of the classrooms. The really exciting part of some of this furniture is not only the ability to move it around and change configurations within the rooms, but some of the specialized seating. I like the modernness of the new seating, that the, some of the chairs have the unit on the bottom of the chair that allows the chairs to move around for the students, and I think that's pretty nice to not, sometimes students before would have a special bumpy cushion or something on their seat. It was pretty evident who needed the bumpy cushion and who didn't. This is really nice because you don't really know who has the seat that can move around or not, so this is provided for all students. Some of them may need it and some of them may not need it. In the Makerspace room, we too have the Makerspace Committee, and our art teacher is really spearheading a lot of our initiatives moving forwards. We have opened our Makerspace. We have, our second grade teachers have already integrated it to some of their lessons. We are building up our supplies. We have lots of contributions of recyclables, but we have put together a schedule for the teachers. And actually, this week, we thought about, in addition to, sometimes making a lot of the, the projects take up a lot of space, and we talked about actually having a spot in the school where students can observe the projects that have been completed. So we actually, with changes in our space this year at the school, we do have a sort of an alcove that we can demonstrate some of those projects, which is great. We're also going to try to, at our next community meeting, take that opportunity to, the art teacher has worked with some fourth graders about using the Makerspace classroom and share that with the whole community. So we're pretty excited about that initiative. One of the other things we'll be doing for the, just the physical plant, working on some upgrades to our playground. Last year, our whole school worked hard with FEF for the Flag Day Race, and we were able to raise some money for that, so we're going to decide as a group how we'll be spending that money at the school. We've worked with DPW, then we had some landscaping things that needed to be taken care of. There are some diseased trees, and I'm working with them to actually replant some trees as well. Food services, we're working with the director so that we can also get a salad bar at our school, which is another healthy option for the students and staff. Also, this year, now that we have had that change in space, looking at reallocating some... some things that we, spaces that we do have in the building. So we have a bookroom, but half of it's housed in one area and half in another area, and looking at some options as we go down the road of making some of our resources more easily accessible for everyone. We're also looking into getting some new technology. So not all of our classrooms have smart boards at this point, but we're working with the district to get some newer technology and then reallocating some of the smart boards that we do have. And we also are looking into the gender-neutral signage as well. So we have looked into our classrooms, and even I had, you know, teachers share their newsletters before they go out, and I noticed yesterday the his and the her, and, you know, so just kind of shifting that thinking across the board. So those are the three goals that we have for the T-Ticket School. Does anybody have any questions? Comments? Yes?
Not about this one in particular, but just overall, they're all so ambitious. There is just so much in them, and I'm just really appreciative that everybody is taking on so many diverse things. And then on the Makerspace, I'm wondering if we could get invited to see the... I don't, I can't imagine what this looks like. So if there's ever an opportunity to come check it out, I would love to.
Absolutely. So we are going to, Ryan's going to be doing some filming, kids in action, and then, but we could also, just that I wanted to share, as we move through the year. But we can certainly invite people in when there's, when the rooms are in action.
Yeah.
Because that's the most exciting piece.
Yeah.
Not, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure the furniture's great, but I want to see kids doing stuff.
Yep, absolutely.
This is a general one as well. Lori, could you explain a little bit more about how the three-year cycle is going to work?
Yes, so we're looking at longer-term goals. So what you'll see is some three-year goals, but as they meet certain action steps, they... Those may come off, and then there may be some new action steps added, but it's that continuous improvement. So just looking a little bit longer term and instead of one year at a time. So it's just that continual growth.
They'll still be doing the same type of...
I'm sorry, so as in the procedure, process? Unless I've not, okay, I'm sorry. So in the spring, so the change we'll see is in the spring that they'll report on the progress toward these goals, and then they may share whatever tweaks the goals there, and then they would not start and come back and share these in the fall. So in the springtime, you'll kind of get the entire piece of it. Does that, yep. And then that just gives us more room and time to spend on our highlights at all the schools.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you to all four of you.
Those are great. I really appreciate your organization, your commitment, your enthusiasm, because that's obvious, and your just ability to work with kids. I appreciate that tremendously. Thank you. Presentation, MCAS and accountability presentation. Say that three times fast.
Thank you. Dr. Tellio and I are back again this year to share with you results from the Accountability and the MCAS. And so we will start with the accountability section. And so, oops, sorry. So in two measures, as we explained last year, there were changes to the accountability system in Massachusetts. And so the two areas was the progress toward improvement targets and then the accountability classification. So you can see that this year, we are the substantial progress toward targets at a 73%, and that is a 12% increase over last year. And our classification remained the same, not requiring assistance or intervention. There are only three categories, just as a reminder. Either you need assistance, you don't need assistance, or you are a, what's the special identified school?
Student recognition.
School of recognition, thank you. Yeah, or distinction, maybe. So we are still in the category of not requiring assistance, which we're very pleased with. Just as a reminder, I'm getting ready to show some of the targets, and I just want to remind what the numbers related to the targets are. So four is the max amount of points that you can earn, and that's for exceeding a target. Three is meeting a target, and so forth and so on. So this is the district chart, and you can see the 73% that I mentioned earlier. We've got circle at the bottom. You can see the fours. I'm going to be pointing out some of the highlights here. I know this is hard to see, but it'll come up in future slides.
Can you just say what the, like, I can't even read on my paper. What are the big colored boxes? Like, how is this broken?
Achievement, growth. The high school completion, progress toward obtaining English language proficiency, and then additional indicators such as chronic absenteeism, advanced coursework completion.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you.
So highlights overall, grades three to eight improved 40% overall, from a 52% to a 92%, and they also increased 6% for the lowest performing students, going from a 74% to an 80% compared to our last year's scores. Grades three through eight, all students category, earned all four points in ELA, math, and science achievement, and the lowest performing students earned three points in ELA and four points in math achievement. Our high school students gained two points in math achievement for both all students and the lowest performing students. And the high school lowest performing students gained one point in ELA growth measure. To continue, our grades three to eight in the high needs and economic disadvantaged categories earned the same points as all students category in ELA, math, and science. This was achievement of a four, and so we're very proud of the high needs and economic disadvantage that they were able to score at that level. And then also at the math growth measure, they scored a three, which is the same as the all students in grades three to eight. The high school students in the high needs category earned four points in math achievement. High school students in the economic disadvantaged category earned all four points in ELA, math, and science. Grades three to eight, the students with disabilities improved by two points each in ELA for a score of four, in math for a score of three, and science for a score of three. And the high school students with disabilities improved by four points in math for a score of four. Our overall improvement toward targets, the high needs increased by 17%, our economic disadvantage increased by 25%, and our students with disabilities increased by 33%. This was the slide in the categories that I was talking about before, and this will help us in the next few slides. And the, that top rank was the schools of recognition. Let's reiterate. So here's our accountability determination for the district, which we'd already talked about, the substantial progress toward targets, but now you can see them for each individual school. Falmouth High School is at the moderate progress. Lawrence, Morse Pond, East Falmouth, and Mullen Hall are at substantial progress toward targets, and North Falmouth and T-Ticket remain at the meeting or exceeding the targets in the same category of not needing assistance. So every school falls in the not needing assistance category. So highlights on schools. Falmouth High School, ELA exceeded most targets, including the economic disadvantage. All students achievement was 98.8%, and the economic disadvantage achievement was 98.4. Math exceeded the economic disadvantaged category for all students, achievement 94%, and the economic disadvantage was a 91%. I think this is important to point out that when we, you're at that, if, when you're at those very high numbers, that just a student or two may bounce up or down, but the high school has remained in those high 90s for several years. So if you're down a couple percentage points, if you're up a couple percentage points, that it's a very minute change when you're at that top level of the high school. At Lawrence, the achievement, at the ELA, they exceeded every target. So they have all fours. In the math, they either met or exceeded most targets, including the high needs and the economic disadvantage. The growth, high, the ELA, in all students, lowest performing, high needs and economic disadvantage. They also received high growth for math in all students, high needs, economic disadvantage, and students with disabilities. At Morse Pond, the achievement, they had ELA, they exceeded the target with their Ls, and they met the target with the high needs and students with disabilities. In math, they exceeded nine out of the 10 targets, including lowest performing, high needs, economic disadvantage, the Ls, and students with disabilities. Their growth was high in ELA with all students, lowest performing, high needs, economic disadvantage, and they exceeded with the Ls. In math, it was all students, high growth for all students, lowest performing, high needs, economic disadvantage, the Ls, and the students with disabilities. East Falmouth Elementary, their achievement in ELA, they exceeded or met all targets. They exceeded with the lowest performing and economic disadvantage. In math, they exceeded most targets, including the lowest performing, high needs, and the economic disadvantage. Their growth was high and exceeded. In ELA, they had high growth with all students, high need students, economic disadvantaged students, and they exceeded with the lowest performing. In math, they had high growth with the high needs, and they exceeded when they, all students and the lowest performing students and the economic disadvantage.
Congratulations.
At Mullen Hall, the achievement in ELA, they exceeded targets with the high needs and economic disadvantage. In math, they exceeded all targets, including the lowest performing, high needs, and the economic disadvantage. Their growth was high and exceeded. At ELA, they had high growth with all students. In math, they had high growth, lowest performing, and they had exceeded with all students, high needs, and the economic disadvantage.
Congratulations.
Two rows.
Yeah, congratulations.
So North Falmouth Elementary, achievement in ELA, they exceeded five of the six targets, including high needs, economic disadvantage, and students with disabilities. In math, they exceeded or met all targets. They exceeded included lowest performing, economic disadvantage, and students with disabilities. Their growth was high in ELA for all students, and in math for all students, lowest performing and high needs.
Congratulations.
And T-Ticket Elementary, we have the achievement in the ELA, they exceeded or met all targets. They exceeded included high needs and economic disadvantage, and the math exceeded all targets, including lowest performing, high needs, and economic disadvantage. And their growth was high in math for all students.
Congratulations.
We're very proud of all of our schools. So some exceptional school highlights I'd like to point out, if that wasn't enough. I'd like to point out a few more. For Falmouth High School, our economic disadvantage maintained ELA achievement at 98% and increased math growth measure by 6.9%. At Lawrence, they increased 13% for an overall progress of 71%, and increased 33% with students with disabilities for a progress of 81%. At Morse Pond, increased the 31% for an overall progress of 71%, and increased 35% with high needs for a progress of 67%, and 24% with students with disabilities for a progress of 63%. And for our elementary levels, at East Falmouth, they earned all possible points in ELA and math achievement and increased by 76% for an overall progress of 92%. At Mullen Hall, they improved nine points in ELA and math achievement and four points in ELA and math growth, and increased 40% for an overall progress of 76. North Falmouth maintained meeting and exceeding status for a progress of 79%, and increased 11% with economic disadvantage and 90% with students with disabilities. The T-Ticket maintained meeting and exceeding status for a progress of 88% and achieved 100% with high needs and 99% with economic disadvantage. These are all extremely incredible achievements. Lot to celebrate. Any questions on this section?
Are we going to do questions, comments now?
Do you want to wait till the end for all of it?
Do the questions now on the MCAS.
I, am I missing something that this is like crazy? It's so good? I mean, it's really extraordinary, right?
It is extraordinary.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
We're very proud of all of our schools.
Yeah. And the progress on the subgroups is remarkable.
It absolutely is.
Okay. Nice work. Holy smokes.
The subgroups are expressed, especially impressive when you look at that, how it grew.
Yeah.
Yeah, so major permutations, I was having the same reaction.
I was like, I must be missing something.
But I think part of what was maybe confusing me a little bit about it is that, I guess in that categorization of schools, with some of these numbers, I was expecting some of the qualitative parts to be a little bit higher, right? So how does that get determined? What's the calculation there that sets us in that spectrum?
So the state sets the targets, right? So even with major gains and targets, you may not be meeting, except for meeting and exceeding, and you might be able to, I mean, honestly, I ask the same questions a lot of times, and so Sonya can absolutely add in. But as I was explaining with the high school piece, right, if your, one target is at 100% and you're meeting 98, you're not going to meet those targets, right? You're not meeting, and then you're not even going to show the substantial growth toward it because, but the difference between a 98% and 100% can be the difference of a couple students, right? And it could be all about that cohort, and so next year's cohort may be, you know, slightly different. But they're incredibly high to start with, and so that, that's kind of hard to understand, I think, for most people. I don't know if you want to add any of the, anything else to that?
No, it's just, it's looking at each of those targets, and they give you the overall student target, and then they give you each subgroup, each of those colored lines that you were asking about earlier, and then they added the lowest performing cohort dynamic to it last year. So each of those sort of subcategorizations, and as Lori said, the higher performing you are, it might be one or 2%, but if you're at 100% and you go to 99 the next year, it's actually showing a decline in how it assigns points, even though it's an outstanding achievement within the system. The other part for us is that last year was the first year on this accountability system, and so they had done a bit of adjusting their normative rating across the Commonwealth and now allowing for everyone to sort of demonstrate the progress as they kind of move into the fourth year of the new assessment, and then the second year of the accountability. So you can also see that growth moving along with the growth of the tools themselves for measuring.
So might we not expect to see something this striking next year because of that switch of how they're calculating it?
In a few of the places where our targets are exceptionally high.
So we still could be doing fantastic, but it might not come out looking that way.
The determination may not be.
Right. And can you remind me how the state sets those targets?
So the target is set based on, they look at achievement across the entire Commonwealth, and then they look with... and then they look within the district. And then they, they have a ranking system. So they may assign it depending on how far the gap is to raise, basically what they're pushing everybody towards, 100%, right? So it's set that way in the system. So they're comparing districts across the Commonwealth and setting the, the targets up that way. For performance among the cohorts, they look at all the cohorts separately and then all students and they look at that as one unit.
Just to, and just to add on, so they have the two measures, right? They measure ourselves against ourselves and then they measure us against everyone across the Commonwealth. So the measure against ourselves was that increase of 12%. And then the measure across the Commonwealth was the substantial, not needing improvement, right? We have the substantial improvement, but it was not needing assistance under that.
Sonya, does the attendance indicator impact?
The attendance indicator absolutely impacts.
Different categories. Interesting. Any other questions? Your own.
I feel like an infomercial, but wait, there's more.
Yes, I know.
So to get a little bit deeper into some of the numbers, as I'm sitting here and reflecting and we're talking about the success stories, part of what I wish I could have done was screen record these graphs for you so that you could see when we punched in the numbers, you could see Falmouth go and the state come. It's pretty, it's pretty amazing and powerful to watch when we kind of go through that exercise. So what you see here for grades three through eight is a summary where the darker blue represents Falmouth Public Schools as the district and the lighter blue represents the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And you can see that Falmouth Public Schools consistently outperforms across grades three through eight. We will get to grade 10 too in a second. And as we look at that, I think the biggest jump to kind of call out here at grade eight, our students saw an 11-point increase. This is the percentage of students earning the top two categories of meeting expectations or exceeding expectations. So that was a group that we saw a significant jump in their seventh grade progress last year and we're kind of wondering where they would hold as a cohort. They made another substantial jump as well. But every, every group across this made a jump of at least three points up towards the 11. Again, looking at just the three through eight, following that same line where the dark blue is Falmouth, the light blue is the state, this is the performance of students in the subgroups and this is just isolating out their achievement score. So you can see the percentage of students earning, meeting, or exceeding, which is a score of 500 or higher. For all students, we're 11 points ahead of the state. You can see that, that story continues through all of the subgroups. Where we are 14 points ahead of the state for economically disadvantaged was certainly an area that Dr. Dora called out several times, the accountability data for students with disabilities and then for high need students maintaining that rate of achievement over the Commonwealth. The grade 10 test, what was unique to the grade 10 test this year is the first year that earning competency determination was tied to what they've called the next generation NCAS. It's the first time our grade 10 students have taken it as 10th graders, but it's not the first time this cohort of students have taken this form of, of test, especially the computer-based model. So we can see that for all students, they've continued to outpace economically disadvantaged by nearly 30 points, outpace the Commonwealth. We do see a discrepancy in two points for students with disabilities. And that was one that we started to address in our NCAS response plan in trying to unpack the data and find out exactly, you know, who are the students and how can you best support them tied to that. And then again, for high needs, you can see the separation in performance. So then when we look at that measure from the other side, we look at growth and we look at that point where they then compare us against the Commonwealth. So they benchmark and they take all of the students across the Commonwealth and figure out where the mid-level is. So the state's average growth is 50 and that's how they set up our measurement. So across our district for grades four through 10, because you need to have multiple years of data, so grade three doesn't get their growth score, you can see that we continue to pull ahead of the state. And this is looking at our grade levels as a whole. There are some pretty remarkable individual student stories, all the way up to a 99 student growth percent for many of our students. This is one of my favorite charts to show you and every year I get excited because the number of red boxes decreases. Not this year. So this is our story for growth, where 40 to 60 is considered average or moderate growth for students as well as for cohorts of students. And 60 to 99, for some reason, I felt the need to code that 53 blue, it should really be yellow. I, I think the most exciting part for me, and I can't get away from it, with that cohort of students is just they continue to make significant jumps, I want them to be blue. But truly, it is a story of moderate growth for all of our students with none of our students falling into the lower growth through ELA. And this is, this is a chart that we started to introduce a couple of years ago in year review. And what would be remarkable, and perhaps I should find a way to graph it one over the other, but this is one of those ones, you enter the new data and hit go and you can watch, you can watch the, the gumball. You can watch them continue to move right and continue to move up year over year when you, when you calculate this. So our students are definitely making movement in the right direction towards the high achievement, high growth all the time.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So where do our, our Ls fall? Do they fall into any of these categories or would they, are they just not, do they not get their own category? How does that work?
There's a couple of ways to answer your question. One is that they don't have a publicly reportable cohort. So there are not enough students testing at any one grade level in order to, to publicly report that.
Okay.
The second piece is that if they are a first-year L, they do complete the assessment, but it doesn't actually give us a reportable score. It's, it's really an exercise for them to go through. So it takes multiple years before some of their scores start to show up. And oftentimes too, for high school students, especially those who are moving into the district in the later years, because they're so close to graduation and oftentimes past the 10th grade assessment, they are taking a retest. So retest scores don't get factored into spring results.
Okay.
So there's a few different factors that affect that. So what we've been trying to study as a district is their access scores, which looks at their four domains of English proficiency, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And we have a group that's just been coming together to study that, the scores by domain, and then make comparisons when the students are able to take NCAS. Because we're struggling with the same thing, it's not publicly reportable. So we had to find a mechanism for understanding how they were doing.
It's not reportable, but we have it, right?
Right.
Okay. So you can look at it, like you can look at it and, okay.
So we have a study team doing just that.
Got it. Thanks.
A quick question, so we're on a definition. And we're looking at growth. As achievement increases, the margin for growth becomes smaller?
Yes and no.
So explain how that works.
Okay. So a student may have, I think this is sort of the scenario you're thinking of. A student may have a low achievement score but a high growth score, which shows year over year that they are continuing to make significant growth, but we're not seeing it reflected in achievement, which is part of why the growth score was developed probably about eight or nine years ago. However, there could be a student who demonstrates high growth, high achievement. The following year could have high achievement, high growth, or could have high achievement, low growth. So one of the easiest ways for us to illustrate that is to think about the math test at grades seven and eight because we have students who are taking accelerated math and we have students who are taking grade level math, but the assessment is based on the grade level standards. So you can see fluctuation, that's one place where we commonly see fluctuation. But it actually really is dependent upon the student and what the student is able to, to learn and demonstrate. And again, this is also one snapshot. It doesn't give us the whole composite who the student is. Did that help to clarify or?
I think so. I, I guess I'm thinking, again, as we keep increasing achievement, like how that reflects in the future ability for growth.
So what is...
The window gets a little smaller.
One of the examples that's going to come up in the math conversation is last year for the grade seven cohort, if I continue on, they had significant growth. And we would have suspected that their growth would have, would have gone down and it did. But then I can isolate out a group of students within that cohort whose, whose growth went up again. So what you see is the whole group and then what you can isolate out for different groups within that is... So the story for math. Last year, as we were talking about, the grade seven cohort had done significantly higher in terms of its performance against the state, which they told us was an anomaly because the seventh grade as a whole across the Commonwealth had actually slid down in their performance. And then we did it again at seventh grade, but our seventh graders moving on to the eighth grade test did it again. So they showed that there's something about who they are as a cohort and who we are as a team of educators instructing them and that, that matchup, they continue to demonstrate that. Another success story in here is that, this is the first time in a couple of years that our sixth grade team at the district level has pulled ahead of the state in terms of that. So the blue line made a significant jump. And third grade was one point below the state in terms of that comparison, but made a significant jump in closing that gap. It's more successful. We have guest speakers, they can speak too. But in, in closing that, and what we're looking forward to, both within the goals that they've outlined in the action plans and in our collaboration with the math coaches, what we hope to see. Looking again at the subgroups, we can see that we continue to outperform the state. And these are areas that we continue to attend to. Is it, is it enough if, if it's outperforming the state by a handful of points? And what are we looking to understand? And who are the students represented in the data? And what are the specific needs they have? And I think you heard that echo again in the goals and action plans. Grade 10, same thing. They're taking this computerized competency test for the first time. And you can see that they continue their success story of performing ahead of the state. In particular, looking at students who are identified as economically disadvantaged or high needs. High needs is that, again, two memberships. So economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities and/or else. They have to have membership in two of the three to qualify there for that designation. So the growth summary. So this is two separate seventh grade cohorts, both achieving that higher growth rating when they're jumping over. But to the point that you were asking about earlier, so last year, seventh graders had an 8. They had a pretty significant growth rating. And then this year as a cohort, 42. But when we started to look and tease out individual students, there are a significant number that are in, you know, the higher, higher 70s, 80s and some pushing on, on that 90. So I guess the next part is to tease out where were they the previous year, right? And kind of look at the dots. Blues are properly coded, they're all 60s or 70s. But again, you know, we had a handful of red boxes here last year and there, there are none in the narrative. So the bubble zone. When we look at the students, again, pretty significant shift. Seventh grade was already over there. When you look at this year's eighth grade cohort, again, the point where we're talking about with the growth, still on the high achievement side, higher growth edging their way. And then five, four, five, and six all kind of clustered together. Science has an equally exciting story to tell. They don't have the growth score, however. You can see it, grades five, eight, and nine performing ahead of the state. This is a particular jump for eighth grade, which is where our greatest success story for the achievement summary lies. They were up 30 points. So from last year's eighth grade science test takers, we increased by 30% than ever students who are meeting or exceeding expectations as that cohort from last year's seventh grade moved forward to the eighth grade test. So that made a significant jump where we had been performing slightly below the state to significantly above. Looking at the comparison by subgroup, seeing a wider spread of the district performing ahead of the Commonwealth across the subgroups as well as all students. And then to follow up with some summary statements about our success stories. For ELA, Falmouth High School continued to outpace the Commonwealth in this launch of the new grade 10 ELA assessment, which had left us with some, some question marks that we wanted to understand. Lawrence School's grade seven cohort demonstrated consistent success for the third year in a row. So the number of students exceeding expectations has continued to make significant increases from its first year at 4% to 11% to 18% last spring. For a second year, Morris Pond students outpaced their peers across the Commonwealth with an average ELA scaled score 10 points higher than their peers in other districts at both grades. And across grades three and four, Falmouth students demonstrated increased numbers of students earning, either meeting or exceeding expectations, which resulted in a 50% reduction of students not meeting expectations. So we're seeing that, the shift that we want to see in scores. For mathematics, same in our Falmouth High School, students outpacing the Commonwealth. Lawrence grade seven students, again, seeing that increase in students exceeding expectations, kind of trying to create a parallel of who the students are between their ELA and their math. Morris Pond grade six students demonstrated significant growth as well as strong achievement with an average scale score above 500. Even more, Morris Pond grade six students shifted the dynamics so that they are now performing at a rate higher than their peers in the Commonwealth. Across grades three and four, achievement scores in math saw significant gains. And grade four students demonstrated significant gains in growth as well, with an average student growth measure falling just into the high growth dimension.
So before you comment, can you just explain that Lawrence School seventh grade cohort? Is that their fifth, sixth, seventh grade scores or...?
No, this is our seventh grade each year. So we started to track that and we had been talking, spending some time talking about the transition our students were moving through and showing the success through that transition. So we want to keep showing that measure. Science again, grade five, Morris Pond students maintain a majority of students achieving, exceeding, and meeting expectations. In grade eight, this is the, we've already shared this, but it's exciting, we're sharing again, gained a 30% for a total of 61% of our students earning, exceeding, and meeting expectations. And in grade nine, Falmouth High School students continue strong performance in biology with 81% earning advanced proficient. They'll be moving to the new assessment forthcoming. They're the last ones to still be measured on the old scale of advanced proficient. Since you're here, a little more about elementary. At North Elementary, nearly 80% of our students in both grades, grades three and four earn meeting or exceeding expectations. At T-Ticket, students raised the average scale score in grade four ELA by eight points, bringing the average score above 500. At East Falmouth Elementary School, students in grades three and four raised the average scale score by more than two points to ensure that they remain above 500. That's that mark towards separating partially meeting and exceeding expectations. And then students in the lowest performing cohort raised their average scale score by 11.8 points, which is a significant increase. And at Mullen Hall, grade four students earning, exceeding expectations in math increased by 10%. A fair amount of the success that we've called up here is also in part tied to the work that we do with the grade level leaders and the first year of our transition towards Journeys and a lot of the conversations they're having about calmly consistent language of instruction. So thank you and thank you to our grade level leaders and our teachers. Good raises. With Dr. Dora's Superintendent Student Advisory Council, we had shared a metaphor about what can come from setting a goal, what comes from planting a seed. The tree in the back is tied to some of their goals, so wanted to talk about the fact that, you know, small ideas, big success comes.
Any other questions?
I don't, I just have a comment. Lori's been smiling me.
There's a lot to smile over.
Cheeks are going to hurt. Awesome.
I wish I had been on the wall when you guys did this because you must all have been like yelling at the computers.
It was very exciting. But really, I mean, the, the thanks goes to everyone, right? I mean, this takes everyone, principals, the teachers, you know, our, our coaches, our department heads. I mean, everybody, you know, plays in together and when things are in sync, good things happen.
Absolutely incredible. Absolutely incredible.
Thank you very much.
So I'll make a plug that this is, that that presentation is directly tied to one of the questions on the end of the year evaluation. If you're taking notes.
Well, this is probably a good place to act on superintendent's goals. I think this is kind of excellent format.
Oh, that's funny.
We got some printout on that as well. I think we looked at that. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
A second.
Second.
Discussion?
I just, I just wanted to say, so I pointed out that I thought we were supposed to approve them at the last meeting, but I also messed up the timeline and didn't put that on there. So I have an updated timeline I can share with everybody that marks when we have to actually take action on it, so that... It's accurate. So sorry about that.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on district goals and objectives. Objectives, next. Motion?
I make a motion to accept the goals and objectives.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Act on Section B of the Falmouth Public School Policy Manual.
Be it on the policy committee, I'm going to make this motion.
I'm going to let you do that.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Section B.
I'll second that.
A second? Any discussion?
So I just wanted to make sure, so, because we got A and C.
But that's for next time.
Right. But there were, were there any other changes on B that we hadn't already talked about? Okay. Just wanted to make sure that there were no last-minute edits. Thanks.
Never, for two times, I was the point person in the room.
Just making sure we didn't have any last-minute ones.
So from the very first meeting, there were a couple suggestions here. They were not substantial changes. So when we took it back to the policy subcommittee, we just made those changes. It was clarifying in one case, and, I'm sorry, was it verbiage? Yeah, it was verbiage. It was nothing substantial. So it was just addressing when we went back and looked at it. We thought that made sense, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
You don't know how good that feels.
One section down.
Really? This is...
It's been a journey.
It certainly has.
Yeah. It's been a year.
Even for those of us that have been doing policy for a couple of years, it's still been a journey.
But yeah, it's really unusual that you have a whole section voted on. It's been, I bet in the last five years, probably, Sonya, you've been through all that too, without exaggeration, we have never completed as much as we did just in Section B. Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
I know, it's a ton of work.
It's our new program that we purchased a couple of years ago to work with the MASC and our field agent, who, when we would have all the questions, legal questions and things, I mean, he knows the answers right out of his head, so that saved a lot of time.
He's so good to us.
Yeah. And Lori's good, too, about, like, talking to Patrick about budget things before we even get there, so.
Yeah, I'm very, I'm very good at including the "we." Whether it's Joannie, or Patrick, or Joan, they all get a piece of it. We share the wealth. Thank you, Terry, for saying that.
Thank you very much. First read on policy sections A and C of the Falmouth Public School Policy Manual.
Sonya, do you want to just quickly, again, I'll just, we have two different sections here. We have a cover sheet. I don't know if you want to talk about the format and...
We do. Again, we try to organize these in a similar manner whereby there's the common statement, so if you're looking at them side by side, the very first section will look the same. Standing policies are not included because we have made no changes to them. And then moving on, they are in the same arrangement, or revised policies. For new policies, new policies are sourced directly from the MASC model policy manual. Eliminated policies, if that applies, oftentimes eliminated policies are eliminated because they were either outdated or redundant. They have been sliced into multiple policies, and so we're working to reconcile that as we go through a process. And then there are, in a couple of instances, policies on hold for continued conversation, and they are just making their way through the appropriate stakeholders, as we alluded to a moment ago. And so after the cover letter are the section dividers, and they go in the same order. And then anything that has been suggested for deletion or revision appears both in red text as well as yellow highlight to make sure it stands out to the eye.
And once again, I want to give a shout out for Sonya's organization for us, and making it so easy for everyone to be able to see. Thank you. I'll continue to be the point person, especially since it's been so hard so far. Yeah, you want any questions or anything?
Anything else on policy? Okay. Conduct routine business, approved minutes, December 24th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So the first thing on the list is that Dr. Teller and I attended the New England Association of School Superintendents' meetings in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. And that was on the 26th and 27th of September. Some of the topics were, we talked about mental health, we talked about First Amendment rights, and I don't know, that Dr. Teller, is there a highlight you would like to share of the two days?
On the second day, we had a really powerful presentation from a group of five senior students, regional school in New Hampshire, but they were sharing how they had ethics leadership council. And they were sharing how they were able to weigh into the decision-making at the school level, and how they were part of making presentations to their community. And they showed ways that they would pick up causes and go in and enact change to support those causes. Not necessarily, you know, if doing a can drive, but actually going out and working with a family and helping prepare meals and things like that. And it was just so powerful to hear the students. They had an adult announce them really quickly, step to the side for about an hour and a half. They just ran us through their entire program. And I think, you know, it was probably the most mesmerizing part of it to me, so thank you.
So if you want to learn more about it, we look up Hype is the group that's across New England. And we are definitely looking into that as well for us, so, thank you. So we had our first student advisory committee, as Dr. Teller mentioned earlier, about the tree. And so their names and their goals. We wanted to keep that growth mindset. It was all about what I haven't done yet, not what, so just keeping the time, the frame of mind that we can achieve what we want to achieve. Had some really good discussions. It is so great to see fourth graders to seniors together and have those conversations among each other. It's really good. But keeping in line, we also feel Sierra Board, they shared what they felt was going well from their perspective in the buildings. And we, of course, always want to have some input about what we can do better. And so we actually listen, have conversations. One pretty cool outcome of, is that Patrick will be working with a student that's very interested in solar energy. And so we've, he's gonna, kind of keeping it aside as we move through and learn more ourselves through vendors and about what the possibilities are, what that will look like. And they're very interested in the, they've been researching, they're interested, so we're gonna make a connection there, and so we're excited about that.
Can I ask, are they the same kids from last year, or do you have new ones?
New students from all the schools. We, so two from each school, which would make up the 14. But two students, a senior, he was a junior last year, is a senior this year, is also returning. And a seventh grader that's an eighth grader this year is returning. And they've, they really pled, kind of pleaded their case as to why they should come back, and that they would take those extra steps to help. And so we now have 16 this year, two additions, and they certainly, in the first day, was actually very helpful. So new students, so we're kind of starting with new leadership activities and hearing from their perspectives. And I'm glad, because they really did have different things to offer from their perspective. And that's good. That's what we want to keep hearing, right? How we can get better. So we're excited about that. So their FEF had their donations at work, reception at the Kunemessent, and the, we had some highlights from teachers in different areas. But I will say, we started out with two students reading their poems. That was all a part of Lawrence's project that FEA, and, you know, we love to hear from students, and they were just awesome. So it was great to start out the evening. It's always great to hear from teachers as well, and they were all just exceptional projects that FEF was sponsoring, so. That's very exciting. We, on October 2nd, we celebrated our school custodians. And I do have to say, we must have the best, because our buildings are like shining all the time. Like, they're just so clean. So really, a big shout out to our custodians. Like Bethany Gay, she's our director of the Coalition for Children, and she just was granted a $25,000 grant for the Parent-Child Home Program. It is for strengthening positive parenting skills and enhancing the children's cognitive development and school readiness. So we're very pleased to continue with our earliest youngsters and being able to support them. So I think we talked last time about the open houses, and so many of us were at the open houses and trying to get feedback around the goals. And so just a couple little highlights. Sharon did her magic, and she collected all that data. We were out there gathering at the open houses. So some of the important items that came up was safety, self-confidence, honesty and integrity, mutual respect, taking responsibility, thinking critically, and creativity. And so those were among the highest from them. But this was the parents that were at the open houses. We sent out the survey, so the survey's out, for parents, for our teachers, and staff, and for our students. And so when all of that comes back, we'll have a full picture how this might be tweaked some, but this was the first step, so I think it was pretty exciting. Parents seem to be...
They were so happy that we asked them what they thought. They were just like, it was great. It was really, really fun to do. They're like, really? You want to know what I think? Okay.
How long does this start by April until?
Did we say November 1? Yes, I think it's November 1. Is that Friday? I think it's, so. So we had a, we, we're continuing our anti-vaping meetings. We had one on October 9th. We planned that we wanted, this is, even though we were seeing less incidents of vaping at our schools, I'm very pleased to hear, we've not had any incidents at Morse Pond and Lawrence, and less than five at the high school so far. And our first, so we're really excited about the progress we're making, but this isn't the time to back off. So we're, Dr. Spleen has agreed to come back. He's gonna do two more evening presentations. We'll get those dates out very soon. And then he's gonna do at the high, two presentations at the high school, one for the ninth, 10th grade, and one for 11th, 12th. So we're gonna expand into, but, so through the month of November, we're committed to do this. Yeah, we're excited about having him back. That was a great connection. Thank you.
Are those for the students or for parents?
So for the community, at the, we're gonna do a little bit different. At the community meetings in the evenings, the two that we're gonna do, we're going to invite students if they come with their parents. Because I want parents to hear the same information, and then they can have those conversations when they leave. And then the high school, it's targeted for the students, yeah. So he's gonna be doing four, four sessions for us, two during the day and two at night. But we'll get the dates out. We're just wrapping those up right now. And then our next anti-vaping meetings at early December, we can get the date out for anybody that would like to attend that. There's a flyer in your packet I'd like to point out, Recognizing and Managing Teen Anxiety. It is a free webinar, and the dates are there. It will be held at the high school in the library, and just wanted to point out, I think that's, it's a very important topic for us. And we also have the Falmouth High School College Fair. That would be tomorrow, from 10:40 to 12:15. And there's a flyer that talks more about that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions? Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Reports from the chair, committee member reports.
Patrick.
Oh, I'm sorry, Patrick, I almost missed you.
We cannot forget Patrick. We cannot. Forget Patrick.
It'll be in the paper.
I was asked to report on two things. One, the YMCA has confirmed that they've hired three additional people. They have three, three more people in the pipeline. As some of you, I've shared with some of you, the process for getting sort of the Corey fingerprint process done for early childhood is a different process, and a slow process this year. But they would also like to hire an additional three or four people above and beyond that. The challenge with hiring folks for childcare has, is not just a Falmouth issue. Some of you may have seen a headline that the governor in the state is investing additional dollars to pay for early childhood educators and childcare providers. So this isn't just a Falmouth problem in terms of identifying childcare staff. But they're, they continue to work on it. The second one was, there was, I was asked to provide some update or report on the field and use, more specifically around usage, on the field as a project where we have not gone through the final closeout period. I just need to schedule the time with CDM. We're waiting on a phone in the elevator before we can do the final, final closeout. And I can, I'll report that when that happens. But in terms of usage, I had fun with this report. According to Julie Williams-Tinkham, we have 20 to 25 classes a week out on the field. So, and that's been going on since the beginning of the year. So over the period of September to October, we expect to, have had or expect to have literally 160 or more PE classes out there active during the day. Now, after-school is also very, very active. And I wouldn't have guessed these results in terms of the usage patterns. But boy soccer have used the, and this is September, October time period, through the end of October, we have a shared calendar. This is why I'm not just predicting the future, we have a shared calendar of what's going on.
Unless we get rained out.
Yeah. No, not too many, yeah. Boy soccer have had 17 sessions on the, our multipurpose field. Second was field hockey, had 13 sessions. Girls soccer, 12 sessions. Band, 11 sessions. Football, 11 sessions. And community youth football had four sessions out there. And a session can be a practice of hour and a half, two hours, or it can be a stretch of three hours or more for, for like the Friday night football game or something like that. Very well-used, you know, over two-month period, having that used that frequently. And it's gonna be perfect tomorrow, and the day after that, and the day after that. We do not have to worry about the quality of the, of the playing surface, so it's huge. So everything I've been hearing is, people really are enjoying the usage of the field. Is that kind of what you want?
Yes. I appreciate that very much. Thank you. And I almost forgot you. Anything else there, Patrick?
No.
Okay. We'll go to committee member reports. Terry.
Kelly and I went to an informal gathering of stakeholders for the carousel, okay? So I thought I'd tell you first who was there. There was so much information. I tried to highlight, and Kelly, I miss anything major, jump in. The people who were there was Michael Casparian from the Chamber of Commerce, Jim Bowen, and Mr. and Mrs. Clarkson, Troy Clarkson, Megan English-Braga, Kelly and myself. Okay, so, it was an informal gathering held at the Chamber of Commerce. And some things that I noticed are that the slant of the project seems different now, because it was, I mean, we were thinking more Mullenhall School, you know, that that's where this thing was. Well, now, it's kind of moved direction closer to Shiveritz Pond. And part of that is a, there's a plan starting for making a park, a town park in that area. So, it's kind of going, they, they kind of want to meld it into that project, too. So, it isn't just something standing on school property anymore. Okay? And I have some pictures and some plot plans that I'll give you, but that's coming down right here. Okay, so, they all, they talked about the fence that separates, it'd be more of a separator, making it higher. And you might be seeing less of the actual structure from the playground, because it's going to be lower. It's down lower. Okay? Which you'll see when you go next week. Lori has arranged a site visit there, okay, to see. I was amazed of the difference in where it's going to be placed. Kelly and I went and did the walkthrough on that, too. Okay. Megan English-Braga said that they have done many surveys of other possible places for this, and they keep coming back to the fact that where it is downtown near Main Street is the best place for this thing, to make it worthwhile to run a carousel. Okay? And I guess this year, Jim Bowen said that they've had the best year that they've ever had. Okay. Michael Casparian's in the Chamber of Commerce is on board for considering the carousel as part of an attraction to downtown Falmouth, and perhaps become part of the Christmas stroll. Okay? There's a four-step plan, which I didn't photocopy to hand out.
I don't think it would make sense without the explanation.
I don't think it would make sense either, so I did it. But, okay, so, the structure, the reason that they are happy about the permanent structure is that we'll sit and wear and tear on the horses. And they would like to have windows in their permanent structure, so that you can see these horses all year round. And they talked about kids from the Mullenhall could maybe go over and do projects, or other people could do projects. And they really are pretty, so it's good that they would be up and protected all year long. Okay? They think it would probably take about a week. I'll just show you, and then I'll give this to you, okay, along with the puppet. They said it would probably take about a week to put this up, so it would be not a major disruption in the school day. And one thing I wanted to mention about the legalities, which I didn't get into, because we're going to have a presentation in a couple of weeks' meetings, right, Lori? But one thing I would just like to mention to the lease part, it would be a combination of the selectman and the school being mentioned in the lease. And so, we could, we could say we didn't want to have smoking on the property, for example. We would have some say in it. Okay. Did I leave anything out?
I don't think so.
This is general background information for when we go there. I hope you all go, because, I mean, to me, it was just different where it was on the plot plan, and it makes a lot of difference. So, this is the picture of the thing. And the other side, the reason I'm giving it to you before next week is so you can kind of look over and get a feel. I'm sorry that it was shrunk down, but this had to come through email. Okay? And the big ones are two Congress and eight. So, get out your bag and find glasses. All right? So, maybe you want to look that over before the site visit. And there you go.
Do you mean that's going under it? Is that what you mean?
What's going under?
The carousel's going under that?
Yeah.
Structure?
Okay, so.
Can you, I'll just take one.
Okay, I'm going to give one to Steve. I don't know if you want a picture. Okay. So, Kelly, did I leave anything out?
No, I think that covers it. Well, so, when we do the site visit, it will, it's part of our meeting, so it's open. And then, it's, they'll also, people, somebody from the carousel is going to be there to answer questions when we're there.
But they're going to come en masse and give a presentation a couple of weeks after that.
Oh, so this picture shows it without the walls?
Yes.
Yeah. Obviously.
You got that.
I am master of the obvious.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that out there.
Okay, you're welcome.
Request for follow-up, any other reports?
Can I just stop? Can we go back to the carousel for a minute?
Go ahead.
Did, did they say that they got, like, approval from?
I don't think we can talk about it, because it's not on the agenda.
We can't, we can't. That, I'm just talking structure and placement.
Okay.
Legal things, we shouldn't go there yet.
But I think you should bring them on, at our next meeting, because they'll be there and they could answer.
Yeah.
And it'll be on.
It should be a question for them. They'll be there.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Request for follow-up information?
Sorry, one more. When is the walk, when is the open meeting walkthrough next week, just so the public knows?
5:30.
When?
On Tuesday, before our meeting next Tuesday.
Thank you.
So, we'll open up the meeting there at 5:30, and we'll try to conclude by 6:15, so we can, as a recess, we'll be back here at 6:30.
Thank you.
To open the meeting, or reopen the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Thank you. I appreciate that. Subcommittee reports update?
We just voted Section B.
Negotiations are ongoing.
Thank you.
Still going.
Any future items? Any announcements?
Okay, I have announcement that there's a group of French students here who I have, Lori got to meet over the weekend. I was out of town, so I couldn't go. It's wicked exciting. I'm going to go Thursday, and where they're going to be carving pumpkin, pumpkins and capuchinier. It's funny, because I've done some of these exchanges in years gone by. And the kids love to come to New England, because we have this nice, they have vacation time around this time of year. Okay, so, you know, when we do those trips, you try to wrap the trip around a vacation, and then get the, you know. So, but they especially love New England, because we have all these pumpkins. And they used to go trick-or-treating, I don't know, in the old, because they never do that in France. So, anyway, so, just later. Anybody can come and meet these kids, and, you know, you might want to carve your own pumpkin, too. It's Thursday, right after school, which is around 2:15. So.
That's great.
Maybe also it's French. I'm going to talk about it, too.
I have one. So, there's a screening of the follow-up film Screenagers about kids in tech. It's at Mashpee High School, Thursday at 7:00. I haven't seen it, but it seems like something people would be interested in.
Anything else? I will leave you with a quote. Quote, "True teachers are those who are to use themselves as bridges over which they invite their students to cross, then having facilitated their crossing joyfully collapse, encouraging them to create their own." Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.